The Board has been in closed session since 6:00 PM this evening and we appreciate your patience. Our agenda was a little ambitious for the amount of time we let ourselves have to discuss student discipline, employment of employee, collective negotiations, pending litigation, and property acquisition, lease, purchase. We have six board members present, one absent. So please, next, please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on our agenda is public comments. I don't see any blue cards that have up at my position here. Are there any public comments from the audience? Hearing none, then we'll move on to action on closed session items. The first is student discipline.
Yeah, if you would, please. I'd like to make a motion that the Board of Education uphold the administrative recommendation of the two-day suspension for Student A, and as such, Student A should complete the suspension days effective September 16th.
Mrs. Stufan?
I second that motion.
Move by Mr. Bloom, seconded by Mrs. Stufan. Any discussion? All in favor of upholding the suspension, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Second, negotiations. We have two items under these negotiations. First is a new contract with our PSRP union, and the second is a memorandum of agreement that is associated with that new contract. So, yeah, so let's handle each one separately. Let's first talk about the contract. So, if there's a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the 2013-2017 agreement between the Board of Education and the Elmhurst Paraprofessional and School-Related Personnel Council as presented.
I second that motion.
Okay, move by Mrs. Ebner, seconded by Mrs. Stufan. Any discussion? So, you know, I'd just like to thank our administrative team and the PSRP union for negotiating a very good contract, doing so with respect for one another and with the best interests of the children of this district in mind. Mr. Hillman, do you have any comments you want to add, please?
Yes, I also would like to thank members of the PSRP staff for their cooperation in using interest-based bargaining. The process, I thought, was very smooth, and again, much like the custodial and maintenance contract negotiations, I thought went quite far in developing relationships that I think will serve the district well into the future. Additionally, when we were able to begin looking at tying raise increases to CPI and the money and the time in which we received the money, I think that that was also a benefit to both the PSRP union but also to us. And again, I think that that process was very, very smooth, and I thought it was what the interest-based bargaining should be.
And again, thank you to our administration and especially to our PSRP union, because we want to be a good employer, and we appreciate the congeniality that this was negotiated with. So, thank you very much from both sides. So, let me first take a vote on the contract itself. And we need a roll call vote because we are, we're spending money here. So, Mrs. Walsh.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough is absent. Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. So, we have six ayes, one absent, no nays. The contract is approved. And then, the second thing we have is a memorandum of agreement to modify that contract for one year, to try out something to see if it works for both, for both sides of the contract. So, Mrs. Bastido?
I move that the Board of Education approve the memorandum of agreement between the Board of Education and the Elmhurst Paraprofessional and School-Related Personnel Council for the 2013-2014 school year only.
Mrs. Stufan?
I second that motion.
Any discussion? Mr. Hillman, maybe you can explain what this memorandum of understanding is all about.
In looking to make sure that we are compliant with the Fair Labor Standards Act, we are very much aware that we need to make sure that we are paying our employees at a proper rate. The rate that we're talking about specifically are when our employees, our PSRP members, participate in extra-duty assignments that are outside of their job classification. When they do that, there is a clause in the current contract that you just approved that requires that they be paid at the teacher rates. The difficulty with that is that when you apply the Fair Labor Standards Act, we are then also required to pay them overtime for those hours worked over 40 hours. In trying to manage that piece, that is very difficult for our payroll department. Therefore, what we tried to do is come up with a way that we could manage the extra-duty pay for our employees, pay them at a fair rate for assisting us with those extra-duty assignments, and make it so that way it is manageable for the payroll department and for the district. The reason that we have decided to ask for it as a memorandum of understanding as opposed to negotiated contract language is that it would give us one year to see the realities of what it is that we're proposing. Does this agreement work for the PSRP members and seem a reasonable rate of compensation for them? Additionally, does it do the things that we thought it would do for our payroll department? And also, does it allow us to manage budgets and be able to predict what it is that we need to set aside for these extra-duty positions that our PSRP members do as extra work for us?
Any further discussion? Again, I want to say thank you for both sides getting together and solving a problem, deciding that we'll all try something new, and doing it in a timeframe to see if it works for everybody, and really providing a better educate, the result is providing a better educational environment for our children. So, thank you. So, with that, we need a roll call vote. Mrs. Walsh, please.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough is absent. Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. So, we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent. The memorandum of agreement passes as well. The next issue we have is employment of employee, a retirement agreement. The administration has recommended board approval of a retirement/resignation agreement with support staff employee Alice Beldon, the terms of which provide Mrs. Beldon's resignation effective September 30, 2013, and a retirement/resignation payment of $17,000. Is there a motion to approve this agreement? Mrs. Stufan?
I move that the Board of Education approve the retirement agreement and mutual release as presented by the administration.
I have a second. Mrs. Harrell?
I second the motion.
Thank you. Any discussion? Hearing none. Mrs. Walsh?
Mrs. Stufan?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough is absent. Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. So, we have six ayes, no nays, and one absent. The retirement agreement is approved. Next is superintendent's communications. Mr. Purnell?
Yes, this evening, Meg Schnorr is going to take some time to go through kind of a basic 101 of special education. And although it sounds simple, a basic special education is never simple, and I think that's why it's important that we share some information with the Board of Education and with the public about what special education is, what are obligations as a local school system, what is mandated by both federal and state law, and how a special ed program operates. So, I'm going to turn it over to Meg, who's going to do a presentation this evening.
Thank you, Dave. The purpose for tonight's presentation is threefold. First, to give you a bird's eye view of what you might encounter if you were to take a special ed 101 class or an intro to special education. Second, to update you on some of the trends in special education in Elmhurst 205. And third, to prove that the person with hair who sits at that table can actually talk.
Meg, that's a good point. It's been, I think I've been on the Board now almost five years, and I've never seen you up there, so it's, it's great to have you up there. Thank you.
Well, the one good thing about being bumped for four years is I have a whole bunch of stuff to tell you. So, that's good.
Perfect.
Good. What I don't want to do is overwhelm you, so if you have questions as we go along, just feel free to go ahead and stop me. We can treat it as, you know, like a conversation if that's something that you're amenable to. So, when I first started thinking about doing this presentation tonight, and you know, special ed 101, I started thinking back to my first class in special ed, and I won't say how long ago that was, but my first special education course started with a simulation of a visual perceptual learning disability. So, on the next slide, there is a picture. It's a very poor quality picture, but a picture nonetheless, and it's going to show you, you all be able to see the picture, but not everybody will be able to perceive it. Okay? So, this is a classic picture that shows the difference between vision and perception. You can all see it, but not all of you are going to be able to perceive it. And in order to perceive it, you may need some direct instruction, which is something that we specialize in special ed. Now, I know that Jim and Margaret have seen this before, and Emily perhaps as well, because we did this at the community advisory, so you guys have to not say anything. So, what you're looking at, for people, for those of you who can't see it, is you're looking directly into the face of a cow. Is there anybody who will admit that they still can't see it? Okay? Because I'm going to give you some direct instruction, and once you see the direct instruction, you're going to wonder, like I did when I first saw this, I could not see the face of the cow. But once I had the direct instruction, I couldn't understand why I couldn't see it the first time. So, here is the cow. Okay? So, there's the cow, and now you look back at it before, and now you wonder why you couldn't see it before. So, now you have some feel of what direct instruction does for our students. So, the reason why I'm showing this to you is to show you that what a student with a disability needs, like any kid, is a good teacher. So, this is a simulation of something that we do every day, a very simplified simulation of what we do every day in special education. So, what is special education? Special education, according to the IDEA in 1975, is specialized instruction for a student with a disability that's provided at no cost to the parents, and it may occur in the classroom, it may occur in a hospital, in an institution, or other settings. A lot of people ask me, why are there so many more students these days with disabilities than there used to be? Well, the answer is, there aren't. Previous to 1975 and Public Law 94-142, students with disabilities were not welcome in the public schools. And if they were in their public schools, it was pretty obvious that they didn't, that they weren't necessarily welcome there. The right for every child with a disability to be educated is grounded in the 14th Amendment of the U.S. Constitution. Some of the things that Public Law 94-142 ensures for students with disabilities and their parents is a free and appropriate public education at the community's expense. It assures that the rights of those students and their parents are going to be protected. It also provides some funding, although we all know that it's not nearly enough. This law allowed for funding to flow through from both the federal and state governments to help localities to pay for the special education of students. And it also provides protection that we can't just go through the motions. We actually have to prove that what we're doing in special ed is effective. Probably one of the most important things in a special ed 101 class that students have to get their heads around is the concept of least restrictive environment. Least restrictive environment requires us to provide the education to the students with disabilities to the maximum extent appropriate with their regular education peers. Students with disabilities have to be provided supplementary aids and services to the extent that such aids and services will make the regular education setting appropriate for them. Plus, the schools have to provide a continuum of alternative placements if the regular education classroom is not sufficient for them. So, I want to tease out a couple of those ideas right now. So, what does maximum extent with non-disabled peers mean? And who gets to decide that? Well, the answer to that is the IEP team. The IEP team has to make the best decision that they can for the student, keeping in mind that the least restrictive environment that they must consider first has to be the regular ed classroom. So, when we're talking about least restrictive environment, we have to look at case law and trying to figure out, well, can this student be reasonably accommodated within the general education classroom and still be able to progress in the general ed curriculum? Reasonable accommodations could include anything from frequent breaks to sensory activities. It could be a one-on-one aide, it could be a classroom aide, it could even be a one-on-one So, what would be a situation where a student would not have the general education classroom as their least restrictive environment? We have a lot of students in the district who have needs that are beyond the general ed classroom, and some of those students are the students that we have in alternative placements, either at SACID, perhaps in other districts, or in private day schools. We are required to provide a continuum of services. There's no, there's no escape hatch, if you will, that says, okay, well, this student has this disability, so therefore you don't have to provide for them. We have to find something that is appropriate for all of those students. The special ed process is very complex. I will tell you that we have about 1,400 special ed students in the district. That's right on average with the state at about 13 percent. And every one of those students has at least one meeting, probably closer to two or three IEP meetings per year, depending on the level of severity of the student, the level of communication that a parent requires, but it's a minimum of one meeting per year. And at each of those meetings, there's a minimum of about 45 pages worth of paperwork that our staff are completing. We determine least restrictive environment. The first step is the student has to be eligible for special education. And in order to become eligible for special education, there's a whole process before that as a pre-referral service, but I'm not going to get into that tonight because it gets a little bit too detailed. So, we have to do a thorough assessment of the student, and this assessment has to be nondiscriminatory. That means, for example, if a student is bilingual, we may have to do an evaluation that determines what the dominant language of the student is prior to completing the evaluation, because if the dominant language is something other than English, guess what? We have to go out and find an evaluator, sometimes a psychologist, a speech pathologist, who may be speaking Russian, they may be speaking Gujarati, they may be speaking Urdu. These are just some of the things that we have to do to make sure that our processes are nondiscriminatory. Once we go through the whole evaluation process, we have to first have what's called a domain review meeting, and at the domain review meeting, you would have all of the multidisciplinary team around the table. And among those team members would be your social worker, your school psychologist, your speech pathologist, a special ed teacher, a regular ed teacher. It's a big room, and it's very intimidating when parents come in, and we try to prepare them ahead of time. So, I think I named off all of them. We also have to have a school administrator, and we're also now required to have a certified school nurse. So, although we have all of our RNs at the meetings now, it has to be that certified school nurse, of which we now have three in the district who travel between buildings, because those are the only people who have the credentials to complete the paperwork that's required for an IEP. So, you have all of those folks, including the parents, sitting around the table, talking about the student, kind of a, what do we know, what do we need to know, and how can we figure it out? And that's how we determine which evaluations are going to be done for the student. So, once all of that process takes place, the parent signs for consent, as any parent would want to do. You want to be informed about what kind of evaluations are going to be done for your child. And following that, the team has 60 days, 60 school days, with which to complete and present the information on the student. Now, if that student does become eligible for special education, that is when the IEP is prepared, and that's a whole other set of meetings and a whole other set of paperwork. And the IEP is required to have very specific components, and that's something that's part of my position, is to make sure that we're reviewing all the IEPs to make sure that they're doing, that the staff are doing everything that the state requires us to do. So, an IEP is prepared, it must include the student's present levels of performance. We have to know where the student is functioning at, and then make goals and objectives to try and close that achievement gap or the behavior gap that they seem to be having difficulty with, so that they can be working commensurate with their age mate peers. So, you have annual goals and objectives, and we also have to have in the IEP an explanation of the extent to which the student can't participate in general ed. So, we have to make it very clear to the parent that, okay, for this particular course, maybe it's reading, they are not going to be with their age mate peers. There should not be any, any secrets that are kept from the parent. That would be very detrimental to everybody involved, and it would be pretty immoral, in my opinion, but it has happened in several districts. Now, I'm going to go through very briefly all of the disabling conditions that we serve in the district. In order to be eligible for special education, the disability has to be recognized by the Diagnostic Statisticians Manual, which is known as the DSM. So, all of the disability classifications that I'm going to be going through are included in this DSM manual. The first is autism. We are seeing a significant spike in autism in our district, as everyone else is across the country. For example, I'll show you some statistics later, that since 2008, we have increased in our autism population by 39 students, and that is very significant, because students who are on the autism spectrum who are severe, which I'll tell you that the majority of the students that we have gotten in the last couple of years are very severe, those class sizes really can't go above about seven, and it almost has to be one-to-one instruction, typically from a lead teacher and several aides in those classes. So, obviously, autism is a developmental disability affecting verbal and nonverbal communication, social interaction, and generally is evident before the age of three, and adversely affects the child's educational performance. Developmental delay is the only classification that has a timeframe around it. You can only be eligible for a developmental delay between the ages of three and nine. By the time you hit nine years old, the IEP team has to more specifically define what the disabling condition is. So, typically, you'll have students who have a developmental delay who may go, once they turn nine years old, to a behavior-type IEP under an emotional disability. You may have students who qualify for learning disabilities, or we get more specific with indicating that it is in fact an autism spectrum disorder at that point. Other health impairment, I'm not going to read the whole slide to you. Typically, this is where our students with ADD and ADHD fall into if they require the type of services on an IEP, but you can also see that some of the conditions could include asthma, attention deficit disorder, diabetes, epilepsy. It pretty much runs the gamut. Emotional disability is also pretty self-explanatory. It's the inability to develop or maintain satisfactory interpersonal relationships with peers or others. It may also cause, it might also include depression or pervasive mood of anxiety or unhappiness, fears associated. We have school phobia, that a lot of students who are school phobic do fall under the emotional disability classification. Speech and language impairment, everybody thinks that this is pretty self-explanatory, but really, it's not. It's not just the students who, you know, have trouble saying the TH sound, and they replace it with enough sound, or they have an articulation issue. It is in fact both articulation as well as language. We have students who have difficulty understanding the written or spoken word, or have difficulty expressing themselves because they don't have the motor ability between their brains and their mouths to be able to form the words that they want to say in the amount of time that is typically socially acceptable. Orthopedic impairment, that's obviously pretty self-explanatory. Cognitive disability, significantly sub-average intelligence occurring concurrently with deficits in behavior manifested in the developmental period. So, this would typically be what in the old days was referred to as mental retardation. It's now referred to as cognitive disability. Hearing impairment, again, self-explanatory. Learning disability, this typically is where you have the majority of your students, and we're going to tease a little bit of that out later, because we have had a significant drop in the number of students that we have eligible for learning disabilities, and there's a good reason for that, and it's mostly good stuff. Within the district, we serve students in two different types of settings. It's either a resource setting, which is for students who require special education services less than 20 percent of their school day. So, if you're familiar with what you may have seen in school, which would be that a student went down to a resource room for a certain amount of the day, or now we like to push into the classroom so that the special education teacher can service not just the students with the IEPs, but also help some of the other students, so that we're not singling kids out, and some of the other students in the class also get the benefit of having an additional highly skilled teacher within the classroom. We also have our instructional programs. These are not, the resource program is available at all of the schools in the district. The instructional program is not available at all of the schools. We have, we have instructional programs at Field School, Jefferson, and Jackson at Elementary. We also have it at all of the Middles, as well as at York High School. Instructional is more what you might think of typical special ed, kids spending the day in a room separate from their age mate peers for the most part. So, this is for students who need services 20 to 60 percent of their school day. We have added supports in those classrooms. Typically, there is a lot more social work services or speech-language services that are infused into those programs, because a lot of the students in the class have similar deficits in those areas. We also address multiple grade levels. We have a primary instructional program at Field, Jefferson, and Jackson, and that's for grades K through 3. And then, we also have a 4-5 program at all three of those buildings as well, and that is an expansion over the last couple of years. This is a breakdown of the changes since FY08 in the various disabling conditions. You can see that in autism, we have increased by 39 students. In FY08, we had 97 students who were eligible under the classification of autism. We now have 136. Emotional disturbance has also gone, has gone down. Learning disabilities have also gone down. Other health impairment has increased. Multiple disabilities has pretty much stayed stable, and developmental delay has increased. Now, you might take a look at those numbers and say, what is going on here? Because you have students with learning disabilities who have decreased, but almost the same amount of students increasing when you get to developmental delay. So, at first glance, you might think, okay, well, all of the developmental delay students were learning disabled students, and we just switched them. But you can't do that, because developmental delay, remember, ends at age nine. So, again, eligibility increases from 90, we had 97 in '08 in autism to 136 in FY12, and developmental delay has increased from 58 to 173. So, those two combined was an overall increase of 154 students. But now, you'll see the decreases on the next slide. Learning disabilities has decreased, emotional disabilities has decreased. So, what is the change? Why are we seeing significant decreases in the area of learning disabilities? This is where we get to the good news. So, in, prior to FY08, this district did not have a researched-based reading program. You may be familiar with the program Reading Street that we've been talking about for several years. So, my understanding from talking to people who worked in the district prior to FY08 was that there was not- was that there was not a consistent reading program in this district. So in FY08, '09, the Reading Street program was adopted, and there was a significant amount of professional development that was done with our teachers, to make sure that the program was being implemented with fidelity. So that's one of the changes, that is reducing the number of struggling readers. Because what you see as learning disabilities, in the past, the way we used to do things, were actually struggling readers. Students with learning disabilities don't overcome their learning disability. What we had were a bunch of struggling readers, who were identified as having a learning disability. So through the process of having a research-based, scientifically proven-to-work reading program, we were able to identify more students who were having reading issues. We also initiated map testing in AmesWeb, which is a reading screening, in 2009, which also identified struggling readers, and kept them from being identified as students with learning disabilities. Struggling readers, through the process that's now been developed, known as RTI, you guys have heard that before, we have a process now, that we did not have before, to systematically identify struggling readers, and to intervene with them, before we ever have to give them any kind of special education label. Previous to RTI, the process of determining a student having a learning disability required that we have two different types of tests, and there had to be a significant discrepancy between the scores on those two tests. You would have an ability test, which is also known as an IQ test, and then you would have an achievement test. And there had to be one, at least one standard deviation discrepancy between those two scores, for a student to become eligible for LD. Now, the problem with that is, you couldn't get, and we used to say this all the time in special ed, it was impossible to get the discrepancy that we needed, to give the student some help, until the end of second grade. Now, how paralyzing is that? So over the course of the last five to seven years, the discrepancy model has been eliminated from Illinois, thankfully. And we are under a process now, where we need to systematically identify students who are struggling, intervene with them, and intervene with them, and intervene with them, with research-based, proven-to-work interventions, before we can even start talking about them having a learning disability. Does anybody have questions yet? I know that that's a lot.
The number of other health impairment, that one looked like it went up quite a bit.
Other health impairment, we're seeing a significant spike in students who have, who are medically fragile in the district.
Oh, okay.
And we're also seeing an increase in the number of students who are being diagnosed with ADD and ADHD.
That's what I wondered, because that one is the ADHD category.
Yes. So there has been an increase in both of those. It pretty much runs the gamut. If you have something medical that's interfering with your education, other health impairment is your designation. Okay, so, we have a lot of students in our district now, who do not have IEPs, but are receiving interventions. For example, Jefferson Elementary had 65 students, at some point in FY13, receiving interventions. I'll be honest with you, right now, we're really focusing on the reading interventions. The math interventions are, they're coming, but we're not at a point where we can say that we're really systematically implementing those at this point, so we're really focusing on reading. Students come in and out of intervention. You don't stay in intervention forever. The idea is to close the gap, and then to move the student on, so that we don't have this label situation unnecessarily. Another example is Fisher Elementary, during FY13, had 98 students going in and out of intervention. District-wide, in FY13, we had 1,062 students not on IEPs, receiving some type of intervention assistance during the course of their school year. The interventions are provided by just a gamut of people: special education teachers, our special education aides, general education teachers, and our reading specialists. Another intervention process that we have put in place in the last couple of years is really committing to the child-find mandate. And that means that we're really actively seeking out students who are having disabilities at the early childhood level. And the numbers that you're looking at here are showing the increased enrollment. You guys have all been so generous to continually approve the additional classrooms, and things that have been needed at Madison, over the last couple of years. This is where you're seeing the increase in developmental delay. That's why it's increased since FY08. The developmental delay, that group of kids are typically at the early childhood level. So we're finding students, they have different types of delays. I do have some interesting information that Susan Condrat shared with me. Of the 103 at-risk students at Madison, 64 of those kids are bilingual, or ELL students. And of the 92 students with IEPs, we have 13 of those students who are not only IEPs, but also English-language learners. So we're getting the students early, and then moving them out before they turn nine. That's why you're seeing the decrease in learning disabilities, but an increase in Another slide on preschool early intervention. Students who previously would have been in self-contained kindergarten classrooms, because of what's going on at Madison, they're not going into self-contained. They're going into their regular ed kindergarten. Yes, they may be being supported with an aide, but they're in there with all of their peers, they're getting the same curriculum as all the rest of the kids in Elmhurst. Students who previously would have required an outplacement when leaving the preschool program, are able to receive their services in the district-based programs. And that is because we have expanded those programs. If we didn't expand those programs, I would venture to say that our outplacement list would be well over 100, instead of hovering at 55, which is at the same place that it was in FY08, in spite of the fact that we've had a significant increase in severely disabled students coming to our schools. I'll never forget that, when I first sat down with the board, before I signed my contract, David Carquist said, "Meg, I need you to do three things. Open the Transition Center without a hitch, repair all of the broken relationships, and educate Elmhurst students in Elmhurst." So that is something that we have been able to accomplish in the last four years. And that always sticks in my head, he was always the king of the three-part question. So I remember that there were three parts to that. Obviously, students with developmental delays are receiving their services sooner, so that's keeping us from having so many students diagnosed as, switching over from developmental delay to learning disabilities, when they turn nine. So we have students who are graduating out of that group, who maybe were struggling readers, who are identified as LD, but they're not being replaced by another group of kids with the same issues, because we're intervening earlier. Questions on that? So better screening, plus early intervention, plus a research-based reading program, and progress monitoring, has resulted in a reduction in LD numbers. We are having an increase in severity. We have added several sections. It was very necessary. You can see the impact of the needs for autism are hitting the high school now. We did open another section of autism-based programming at York High School this year. We have had no increase in administrative support, in spite of adding all of these sections. So really, all of this expansion has been, I hate to say it, but on the backs of our principals. They've had no additional support, even though they're taking in these classes of kids who are really severely impaired. We have kids who are runners. We have kids who need to be restrained. Our principals are right there on the front lines, all the time, and they are relentless in trying to keep those students in our schools. And they pretty much view having to outplace a student as a failure. I'm like, sometimes it's not a failure, sometimes it's the best thing we can do for the child. But they have been wonderful. And again, we haven't had any increase in the number of outplacements, in spite of the increase in severity. We've had 39 students with autism, an increase of 39 students with autism since FY08.
But what I'm saying is, you said that the schools are taking those students in, without any additional help. So that means, for example, I'm going to use York as an example, so that was a new student into District 205, directly into York? Or did they come from a middle school?
No, they would come, they came up from the middle schools. A lot of the students who, the need for the autism-based classroom at York was because the students were being serviced in our multi-needs, at the middle school level.
Thank you.
So we ended up at a point where we had enough to have an autism-based classroom at York, in addition to the TLS program. So I'm glad that you asked that, yeah.
And that's where it gets complicated.
It's very complicated.
As you transition through all of our, I'm going to call it, levels, segments, early childhood, to elementary, to middle school, to high school, to Transition Center, you know, you're trying to balance that individually, as well as collectively, from an employment, from an equipment, from a, you know what I mean, additional technology to help students.
Sure. Well, and keeping in mind that, just the, the slide on least restrictive environment alone, would have been potentially, probably, three weeks' worth of a class, to really get down to the specifics, so that everybody could understand it. But obviously, you guys don't want to sit here for three weeks. Last but not least, we do have, I referenced earlier, that our funding is not nearly what we would like it to be, but I thought that you would be interested in the reimbursement that we do receive, from either state or federal entities, to help defray the cost of special education. The first one is Medicaid. We have several students who are eligible for Medicaid dollars, and how we get those dollars to flow back into the district, is our staff have to complete a time study. So if they're servicing students who are eligible for Medicaid, we can get some reimbursement dollars for the fact that they're Medicaid-eligible students, and our staff are servicing them. The classroom lease line item, we do lease out a classroom to SASC, and that does bring in $18,000 or so a year. X-Fund refers to excessive cost. Excessive cost students are students who, whose needs cause us to spend more than two times our per cap, per student. That's not always a very high number. The X-Fund people down at ISBE will tell you, some years, that it's not even worth filling out the paperwork, because there is no money. So that happens to be the amount of money we got in reimbursement for last year's X-Fund students, but it does change from year to year. It may go up, it may go down. Special ed personnel, we do get reimbursement at the amount of $9,000 per certified staff member, and $2,500 per PSRP, or special ed aide. Private tuition, we do get reimbursement for some of our private tuition. Our budget for private tuition is well over $2 million a year, and the reimbursement is definitely not that much. Our IDEA grant is a little over $2 million per year. Special ed student reimbursement, a lot of times, I think people wonder, why do I have three secretaries in the special ed department? I will tell you, I do not have a secretary. Those ladies are generating all of the paperwork that's required to do all of the claims for special ed students, so every minute is documented for. If a student has 60 minutes of speech per week, that has to go into our iPoint database to generate those funds for the special ed reimbursement. So a student who has, you know, 60 minutes of social work, and 30 minutes of speech, and 20 minutes of psychology, and 20 minutes of OT, all of that nitty-gritty information generates into dollars for our district. And last but not least, the preschool grant, which is a state grant, is about $36,000. Shannon?
So what is the percentage that you're reimbursed?
Well, it depends on the year.
Ballpark.
Is it less than 50%?
Oh.
Okay, so, I was going to say 40%?
I don't even think it's 40.
About 17 million a year.
Yeah. Chris isn't on tonight, so.
Well, I thought at one point, Meg, go ahead.
When I looked at it, it was somewhere around, it was somewhere around 17 million, in one of the years, which meant the state and federal was less than 40%. So the local, local sources pick up north of 60% of the cost.
Well, it's difficult, too, because you have a lot of positions in there, with regard to the personnel reimbursement, that are not exclusively special education. We do claim portions of the social work salaries, we claim portions of the psychologist salaries, but those aren't exclusively for special ed students. So it can change from year to year. Chris?
And I think your point in that number, and you make this point earlier, too, there are a lot of interventions in there, that are kind of ordinary course, in my mind, where, you know, kids don't grow in a straight line. And, and so we, we help pick it up, and like you point out in here, that's in the special ed budget. So, you know, we're spending that money, but those folks are, you know, spread across a wide part of our, our student population.
That's correct. Especially the aides.
Yeah.
And the special ed teachers. I mean, we're able to service kids, that's something we couldn't do before. Karen?
Well, if I recall correctly, when I met with you, before I became the board SASC representative last year, you said something, correct me if I don't recall it off the top of my head, exactly, but from the federal government, and the IDEA, that act said that, that, you know, we will service students with special needs, and we will fund it up to 40%. And there has not been one year where we, a maximum funding was 12%. And that's been since 1975.
That's correct.
So, I mean, that's, that's kind of the reality of what, what we're dealing with.
Well, there's legislators right now, who are still pushing for full funding of IDEA. And they're, from what I can tell, they're pretty much being laughed at, but it's sad to say. Other questions?
One more question. We talked about funding. What other significant challenges would you say the special ed department would face, faces in District 205?
From my perspective, right now, our biggest issue is to have continuing support of the board. I would like to know the direction that you would like for us to continue to go in. It was nice to have those, I joked about them, but it was nice to have those three parameters, to really guide our efforts, and to guide my team, as to, okay, these are the three things we need to get done. You know, we need to open the Transition Center, we got to rebuild trust, and we got to open programs. Well, we've done that now, and we've built that capacity, to the point that I don't really see any more major expansion. But now, what we're working on, I think we have a lot of, like the rest of the district, I'm concerned about the satisfaction of our staff. Our families are very satisfied. I did a satisfaction survey with all of our special ed parents last year, it came back very good. But when I saw the, the results of just our overall staff, I started to get concerned about my special ed staff, because you may or may not know that the burnout rate in special ed, you typically, you know, start to burn out at about year five. So if special ed staff are burning out even sooner than regular ed staff, I get concerned about, you know, their job satisfaction, because I want to keep them. We have some really talented staff. I also worry about our principals, especially at the elementary level. So not only are we really relying on them for all of these extra programs, and these severe students, we've actually gone backwards, because through the EPRT process, we lost the one assistant principal that we had, at the elementary level, which was someone who was split between Lincoln and Hawthorne, because they were the two larger buildings. So we've actually gone backwards, while we've added on more to our principals. Anything else?
Go ahead.
So, and I guess, to your question, my thoughts, at one point, in their, in the presentation, we talked about the need to assess and assure the effectiveness of the efforts to educate, the effectiveness. We spent a lot of time talking about least restrictive environment. How do those go together? So, yes, least restrictive environment is a goal and an obligation, but effectiveness is also, you know, a goal and an obligation. How do you balance those?
I think I, I understand your question, but I think that that is something that's going to be individualized to every student, because a student's least restrictive environment could actually change from class to class. There are students who cannot handle a regular ed PE class, because of all the noise, or because the room is too big, or something like that. So a regular ed PE class is not their LRE. But if they were in a quieter social studies class, perhaps with the assistance of an aide, perhaps not, that could be their LRE for that particular thing. So making sure that they can maximize their educational opportunity, we always want to make sure that they have access to the same rich curriculum, that all of the kids in Elmhurst have, if we can. There are situations where that's not going to be possible. If you have a kid who's highly distracted, or a student who is very low-functioning, the gen ed curriculum might not be appropriate for them. The key word and idea is that the student has to gain meaningful benefit from being in the classroom. So if they're not able to gain meaningful benefit in the gen ed class, but they could gain meaningful benefit in a smaller special ed class, that's where you make that determination.
Right. So we're focused on effectiveness.
Absolutely.
And so, I guess the question is, how do you track that? So we talked a little bit, you put- you put some examples out there about, so particularly on developmental delay, we talk about how early intervention has helped a lot, and we see that in numbers because we see that as, as kids that are not, you know, coming out of early childhood into, and so, so you gave us that example. We talked about Reading Street and some of the interventions there, and I'm guessing that there's some data around, you know, how, how our incidence rates have gone down because of what we've done there. When we go across these, how do we make sure that we're not just, you know, we're not just focused on, you know, about, you know, meeting the law or, you know, providing a least restrictive environment, throwing some money at it, you know, thinking we're doing the right thing? I mean, I think that most parents want what's best for their kid, and so...
Well, for any student, we would want to see that same growth. I mean, we're not going to get perhaps the same growth on like a MAP score that we would with a Gen Ed student, but we do keep a very close eye, if not a closer eye, on the achievement of our students in special ed on those MAP scores.
And are we able to see that or talk about? I mean, I think that would be interesting. It would be indicative of the value that we're getting for the dollars that we're spending on this and that we're actually, we're showing these, these progress and these results. You know, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm thinking about this wrong, but when you think about an IEP, every one of them is different, but in general, we can talk about whether our kids are meeting their goals within their IEPs, what percentage of our IEP kids are actually meeting it.
That's something that we could provide for you, sure.
And, you know, and tracking that. I, I think that we need to talk about the value we're adding. I mean, I think you've done a ton of work here, and we've made a lot of progress. And I think that when we talk about special ed, I think we need to talk about the effectiveness of what we do.
To be able to quantify it, sure.
Yeah, and I, I know it doesn't always lend itself to quantification, but, you know, and sometimes it's a qualitative quantification. I mean, it's, it's kind of a, you know, it's a statistic that kind of gets you into the ballpark with the direction that we're going there. Because I just think it's, I mean, it's a lot of money that we're spending. I think that, you know, whether legally or morally, this is something we need to do. Let's make sure that we're getting value out of it, we're doing the right things. And we may try something and it's effective, or we may try something and it's not effective, and we may try something else. And these are things you guys do all the time. I think it would be helpful to communicate that from, from a data perspective as we look at, we look at DPIs, you know, at a macro level. When we talk about DPIs from within what you're doing, setting some of those goals for the, I mean, and you've got quite a mix of things that you're dealing with. But, I mean, for each one of those, you know, are there some targets that we can set around growth that we would like to see so that you can also highlight the work that you're doing and the progress that you're making as well?
Great.
So I, I think that that, when you ask kind of what's next, I mean, I would love to see a little more of that type of information and talking about the effectiveness of what we're doing within the various groups. And then, one last question. Do we hire someone at York in the administrative side? I thought we approved a position.
That position has always been there.
Okay.
The difference was, and it did, I think that Dave actually explained that, that position had to be filled by two consultants over the last couple of years because there is a significant shortage in administrators in special education. So we had to fill that position temporarily with two retired ladies. One took one half of the year and the other took the other half of the year.
Okay.
We were finally able to secure somebody who we thought really fit the bill for the position this year. So it really is a position that has always existed, existed before I started working here.
Okay.
So it's just being filled in a different way than the last couple of years.
Sure, it's an additional FTE, but it's not an additional resource from the standpoint.
I don't even know if it's really an additional FTE. It was just being filled differently. There was an FTE always there. We had a full-time person.
See, I'm just saying that we in the budget approved it, an addition of an FTE.
No, it wasn't an addition in the FTE. What you had was two consultants. That was always in the budget in the past few years.
Right.
We just traded that out instead of two consultants.
It was an even swap.
We have now a regular employee who is taking that one FTE there, but there was no increase in the budget for that.
But that identification then that we saw was more just in some memo that said these are staffing changes or what? I just remember seeing it in a memo unless I'm nuts, but...
I, I had it in the budget presentation as an increase in FTE because in Position Control, it, it was an addition because the two consultants...
It was an addition of a slot but not an addition of expense because you were just moving the money from bucket to bucket. Okay, I, okay.
So we still have the same amount of help that we had before. Shannon?
Okay. I'm going to echo Chris's thoughts about the vision going forward. What's really stuck out for me is under Public Law 94-142, "To assess and assure the effectiveness of efforts to educate all children with disabilities." So if we can, as he was saying, quantify some, I mean, you probably have it. It's just a matter of maybe bringing it forward to the board. But the, the outcomes of what the growth has been because of what you've put in place, you know, I, I don't know, do we have DPIs around the, the special, or, you know, the, the...
No.
Okay. So I don't know if there's...
Not specific to special ed. They fall under curriculum.
Okay, so maybe, maybe looking at overarching goals that, similar to our DPIs, and tracking our progress toward those goals, and, and really assessing special education outcomes and approving the effectiveness. So maybe it's more like a, a data review. You know, I'm not sure what it looks like, but for the, I would focus on that last bullet of the, that public law, which, which you had on your, the last bullet on your slide six. Thanks.
Yeah, if I can, if I can just throw my two cents in. First of all, Meg, your mandate for Mr. Crowquist, I would say you have filled, filled all three parts beautifully. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second, what I'm hearing up here is that we'd like to hear from you more frequently. And, and I have to say that Mr. Crowquist's mandate, no matter how difficult that was to fulfill, and you did all three parts extremely well, might have been the easy part. From here on, it gets more difficult. What I think we'd like from you as a board is a little education. Help guide us, help educate us on where we can go from here. And, you know, I'd just like to, on behalf of the board, thank you for doing this today and emphasize we'd like to hear from you more often. Help, help educate us so we can make informed decisions as to where we do want the special ed program in, in this district to go. So we'd like to hear from you more often.
Good.
Anything else? Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Next item on the agenda is just to review with the board the six-day enrollment numbers that we experienced on the sixth day. This is the official count date in the district. So this is what Dave has up on the screen. This is, I think, one of the most important ones. This is a comparison of our enrollment from last year to this year. As Meg just said, we are identifying children earlier than we ever have before. That trend has continued, and that's reflected in the early childhood numbers that you see up there tonight. We have an increase of 26 students in the Early Childhood Center compared to last year. That's a pretty significant growth, and that growth has been reflected over the last three or four years. So that program continues to expand. The good news is we're identifying students early. As Meg said, we can apply interventions, perhaps prevent kids from going beyond the developmental delay process, or those students that are simply identified at risk. Do some interventions early and make a big difference. Research shows pretty clearly that the earlier you can intervene with students in education, the better off you are in the long term to make them successful and get them through a positive experience through school. When you look at the elementary numbers, you will see that the elementaries are down by 57 students. It's really a reflection of two things. First of all, we had a large fifth grade class that moved up to sixth grade, and you see that reflection in the middle school numbers of an increase of 127 students. So the middle school numbers are up, elementary's down. The other thing, on the, on the other side of elementary, kindergarten numbers were down this year. And most of that loss that you see is because of the kindergarten enrollment. We're not sure why. We have some indicators nationwide that that kindergarten class was going to be a small class. It was a small birth rate that year, and those students are now hitting kindergarten. I think we're going to see the same thing next year. It was a two-year drop in birth rates, and we may see a smaller kindergarten class coming in next year. So you may see elementary enrollment slide off a little bit over the next two years. Again, at the middle schools, there was a net increase of 127 students. York, basically the same, a loss of nine students. And overall, our district total was 100, or 61 students, more than we had the previous year. That's a steady, slow increase in the trend line. And if we can go to the CASADA one, Dave, I can show the projections that were done by CASADA a few years ago. We do not have, we're kind of getting to the end of this projection that was contracted for a few years ago, but we still have overall data. I don't have it by building anymore at the elementary level because that data has become obsolete. We do have it overall for the district. And, and just an explanation, when CASADA does their projections, they project an A, a B, and a C projection. The A projection is a less likely amount of students coming into the district. So A is a conservative number. B is the average number that they believe the projections will reflect. So if you're on track from CASADA, they would say B is the most likely scenario for the Elmhurst School District. C is a deviation above their trend line. So they would say if the economy was robust, if there are lots of buildings, lots of people moving into Elmhurst, you may see a C scenario in your projections. So they actually give you three samples of three separate projections. As you can see in early childhood, we are well above the C projection that CASADA predicted. So again, we have lots of students being identified, lots of students going into their childhood center. That enrollment has increased above the projection, the most likely projection that CASADA had. In the elementary level, in spite of the loss of 57 students this year, we are still just above the prediction of the B line, which would be the projected enrollment that CASADA would, would experience. Bryan this year, because, Bryan for all, all three schools, basically, they are trending to probably an overall B rating, although you can see there's some differences between the three schools. Bryan is increasing slightly faster than prediction. Churchville is slowing down somewhat, and Sandberg is right at the projection line of B. And then York is slightly below B at, at the numbers we have. CASADA was projecting 2,006.57. We're at 2,006.53. So amazingly accurate for a projection that's, you know, at least five years old right now. It's pretty close. So our total is 8,349 this year between B and C, and you can see most likely 8,259. The aggressive part would have been 8,862. So slightly above B. So overall, the projections from CASADA seem to be pretty close still overall of what we can experience. Looking at CASADA for next year, probably the same kind of increase we're going to experience next year, probably a net of between 40 and 60 students if we stay on the projection line for CASADA. Any questions on that?
Quick question. When does CASADA end? When do the projections end?
I think we have, I think we have two more years. I'll go back and, and make sure. But I think there's two more years of the general projections, and then the data stops. So we should probably consider, probably start talking about it this year if we want to do that kind of projection. Is it helpful? What do we use it for? And do we want to contract with CASADA or similar firm to do our projections in the future?
If I can just add one more thing, you know, I, I look at the totals up there and say, "Well, we just added 61 students." And then you realize that we spend between $12,000 and $13,000 per student. And those 61 students collectively, you know, if, if schools were funded differently, would have carried in a bag of money worth about three-quarters of a million dollars. But they didn't. So we're educating 61 more kids with no more resources than we had before. And when you look at the early childhood projection, those are very resource-intensive kids. And, and just add to the, add to the expense of educating them well, which is our intention to do. So I, you know, I just want to point out to just the fact, the whole board, to the public, that, that even 61 kids provides a substantial expense to the district with, with no corresponding and directly relational increase in revenue. So... Go ahead.
You made me think about another question, which is, I know that every year we get a comparison from the previous year, but can we look at all the numbers? I'm thinking about our community presentation, and this would be good additional data, Jim.
No, I think what Karen, I'm guessing Karen is looking at previous years.
Correct. Yep, because that'll help us with, you know, we're talking about the structural budget deficit and it, yeah.
Yes, we, we have that information, or in fact, already in there.
Oh, thank you.
She's looking for longitudinal data from year to year, and, and we have that for the district as a whole.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, that concludes the superintendent's communication. Next is Board Committee reports. The only Board Committee that's met since our last meeting is the Finance and Operations Committee. So let me turn it over to Mr. Bloom.
This is our committee. He's actually the only committee that worked over the last few weeks. Yeah, right. Mr. Collins?
You, you call that work? Really?
Oh, ouch. Mr. Welton, will you help me with this? So at our last...
Calling the big guy to defend you. There you go.
Don't make me get bald guy on you. At our last Finance Committee meeting, a number of topics were discussed. First off was the July financial report. I think Chris reported that kind of, a little bit of an anomaly in that we received $1 million more than budgeted in property taxes in July, which were late, basically late payments from June that had slipped over. Because I think we were concerned the last time we talked that our, our receipt percentage was a little bit lower than we thought we were going to get in, in the June payment, and we were concerned about whether we should be projecting down or not on our actual amount of property taxes that we're going to receive. And, you know, I think we, we made up some of that in July. This is sheer timing. I, I think, Chris, unless I'm wrong there, but, I mean, this is all big timing. It's, it's not additional revenue to the district, but it shows up because of timing. It'll show up on the July financial reports. It's, is above budget. What else? We, we got the $1 million in TIF revenue in July. And then last piece since, since our meeting, I think the hospital was awarded the exemption, and the refund is coming out of the property taxes that were due a few days ago, or the fourth, last, last week. So that number, Chris, do you have that number?
Yes. It's actually coming out of September 17th's property tax distribution, so next week. And the amount is $3,126,480.
Now, the only bright side of that is, is that now gets it out of the financials, and we can actually look at financial statements without the hospital whipsawing what our budget looks like and trying to say, "Okay, we had more, but we reserved this for that," and whatever. So this clears the decks on that. The, let me skip through the rest of this, and then I'll come back to the discussion about the, the fund balances. We, we talked about a renewal of the intergovernmental agreement with the police department. Dave, is that going to show up on a future board agenda? Or does it, does it need to?
Yes. Yeah, I need, I'm waiting for, it's at the city right now with the police chief. So as soon as they sign off, we'll bring it back to this board for signature and for approval.
Sure. So I, it's, we appreciate the, the willingness to work with us on that. It's a, it's just basically an extension of what we're doing. We talked about the budget process, and I think there, we have a, we have a calendar that we're going to talk about. Once the dust settles on this budget, we're going to kind of walk the board through kind of the rhythm of, of the budget. And kind of, we've kind of gone all the way through it now. We went from ten... now. We went from tentative budget, we'll get to final budget shortly. And then we can talk about as we kick off this process for the following year, kind of what to expect there. One of the things we talked about in committee is the desire to look at the budget in a little more granularity than $106 million on the top line and $106 million of expenses, and we're running something flat. Talking about where we're allocating our resources, what that's getting us, what we're not getting for that, what we're not funding. This was a maintenance budget, so what did we lose out on? Those kinds of conversations, whether it's around, you know, within curriculum, within student services, within the various cabinet areas, starting to get a little bit more granular in understanding the impacts of the decisions we make on the funding side. So that is something that's coming. We talked about the facility plan, and, you know, unfortunately Frank hasn't found any extra additional money under mattresses or anything. We still have a significant need with, without significant dollars. I think the summer work was funded, I think the pool was done. I had heard they're getting in the pool tomorrow, and it looks great.
Yeah, we think so. We think, we're not, we're not going to jinx it.
Ah, of course, I'm sorry.
Believe, if not tomorrow, then very soon.
I've heard it looks great.
It does look great. If you get a chance, it is dramatically improved with the lighting and the restructuring, so.
So, you know, one of the things that we need, as we're going to go into the, one of the first steps of this budget cycle is updating the five-year projections, and as we do that, one of the things we absolutely need to integrate into that conversation is the capital side of this. We typically have talked about it on an operating basis, and, you know, when we talk about this budget from last year, I think I pointed this out at the last meeting, you know, it may appear to be, you know, a balanced budget or a break-even budget on the operating side, but on the capital side, we still have needs. And if you add them both together, we're still short. And so we talked about that, the need to bring that capital aspect into the discussion in particular. And then, I'll come back to, one of the items we spent the most time on was fund balance, and our fund balances. Last year, we talked about how we performed better than expected, mainly due to a number of one-time items. And the hospital has since reversed itself out. The extra state payment can't be counted on. I think we went through this kind of litany of things. And one of the areas that I think I'd like the board to discuss, and we can talk about where to move forward on, is around the fund balance and some of the needs that we have within the district, both on the capital side and within, we had discussed a desire to, I think we called it innovation, but it's kind of reinvest or invest, you know, on a limited basis to get some pilot projects going or things like that. It's taking some of that fund balance and using it to drive, in my mind, reinvest in our people. And I'm looking at professional development, things like that. And so that was decided by the group that it was a board, I mean, it's obviously a board-level discussion, and we talk about setting that aside. I think, subsequent to that conversation at the committee table, I think David kind of pointed out that even if we started today, that a number of the kind of incubator programs or things that we would like to do, if you will, wouldn't be able to come online until next year anyway. So we have some time to have this discussion. I'm not sure, I think performance management, we've had discussions around, you know, pockets of incentive for innovation. Within Finance Committee, obviously, we need to talk about the long-term budget and our fund balance and where that goes. But, you know, our fund balance, due, again, to a number of one-time items, is above the range, I think, that we're targeting. And so the question is how to discuss our options and opportunities with that. So, does anybody have thoughts on that?
If I can chime in here. First, I think it'd be appropriate to hear from the administration first about their perspective, and what their requirements would be for an innovation program, along with what their opinions are and the most urgent needs for resources within what their plan for the district is. And then I think on the tail end of that, we should then have our discussion as well. So.
Well, let me start by saying, I think you heard, there's a couple of needs that I think everybody's aware of across the district. I think one is obviously in personnel, and I think you heard Meg refer to it this evening, some of the administrative challenges that we're having across the district because of reductions in administrative staff over the last few years. There was, if you remember in January, you were presented with discretionary and non-discretionary personnel funding. A lot of the discretionary funding items that were in that document are probably things that still are in need, both short-term and long-term, within the district. So that's one area that I think we're seeing as a need in the operation and functioning of the district and the challenges they think we're facing because of personnel issues, that kind of thing. And as you see, as enrollment goes up, we add staff, that increases teacher ratios to supervisors, it has a, you know, a compounding effect overall. The second one is the whole curriculum instruction, technology piece, that I think we have talked about quite a bit. I think David and Charles have talked about that. If you remember, when we came into this year's budget, we approved the deficit budget with the understanding that we would take some of that out of fund equity, but we would have just a maintenance budget going into this year. What that meant was that Charles and the Curriculum Department put a lot of where he was going on hold. And Charles can get into details if you wish tonight about what things were put on hold. There are also some innovative things in the technology part that we had slowed down, not that we had totally abandoned, but we had slowed down. Those things are also things that you could look at for acceleration. The one-on-one initiative for students with computers is one of those. You know, do you start looking at the acceleration of all of that? I think Chris talked about capital projects. I mean, that's another area. You have a lot of capital projects needs, all of that. So that's, to me, those are the three buckets that you probably need to, you know, we can start discussing. The other issue with some of these, though, is are they one-time funding, or are they long-term commitments by the board? Because if we get into innovation, and if I start pilot projects, incubator, as Chris said, incubator projects, in fairness, you want to make sure that those projects are not established and abandoned in a short period of time. Because what you want to see is, you want to see and give them an amount of time that makes sense to see what the effect is. So let's say we have created an innovative kindergarten intervention program for students in one or two buildings. You really have to have a two- or three-year commitment to see if that pilot project is performing as it was designed and as they predicted. It would be unfair to us to ask staff to come forward with innovative ideas related to the DPIs, for example, and say, we're going to take projects and ideas that may address the DPIs and increase our performance, but our only commitment is a one-year commitment. In fairness, you're going to put a lot of time and effort into that, and it's not sustainable over time. There are some things that can you one-time. I'll go back to curriculum again. You can buy textbooks, it's a one-time investment. You can pick up technology, you know, if you go to one-on-one computing, you have an opportunity to purchase it, it's one-time, you're only committed for the district the one time. So I think the other big discussion the board's going to have to wrestle with in this discussion is what is the long-term commitment? And are you comfortable with long-term or short-term commitments, knowing all the uncertainty that we all are aware of, both at the state level and from funding in general? You know, what's going to happen with the pension? What's going to happen with the state funding? All of those issues are still out there. So the good news is, you know, we seem to have some breathing space here from what we thought was going to be a pretty grim scenario going into this year. But also keep in mind, even with this scenario, you're still approving a deficit budget. So going into this year, it's a deficit budget, we're relying on some fund equity to balance that budget going forward. So that's kind of the discussion we need to have. The other thing I would say is, and Chris spoke about this too, it takes time in order to make sure that we have collaboration and an understanding from our staff of where we want to go. We can certainly sit up here and tell you, here are our ideas of where we think it should go, but I really need some time to talk to the key stakeholders in the system to say, this is our thinking, what is your thinking? We want everybody to be part of this, and there's buy-in from the system overall. And so I think that by necessity, go slow to go fast, but I think the time you invest in that pays off. Because the worst thing you could do is have an idea that, in reality, nobody on the ground floor buys into, and now you've got whatever it is sitting on a shelf somewhere that nobody has really even wanted because they didn't understand it, or they didn't think it was a priority in the change process. And I think what you're trying to get in the district is systemic change, and systemic change takes time.
I think, if I can interject one second, I think I'd like to hear what, I was unaware that we had curriculum that was placed on hold this year. I'd like to hear about what we placed on hold, and what we could move forward as far as curriculum and technology. And then, and then, you know, the board is anxious to start innovation and an effort to improve education in Elmhurst. So understand our excitement that there may be some available resources, but I think as a board, we need to discuss, you know, that long-term commitment, that two-to-three-year commitment, and in a timeframe that ensures that we get a good, in a planning timeframe that ensures we get a good result. I don't want to have a short planning timeframe, have ill-conceived plans or things that could have been worked out better had they been given a few more months to put some thought into. Because, you know, as Mr. Purno says, I don't want stuff left in the closet after a year. So if we can hear about the curriculum part and the technology part, and then have our discussion, that'd be great.
Okay. Last year, the curriculum instruction team looked at the series of materials that have to be purchased and renewed, and went from the five-year goal that hadn't been fully in place that the board had set for curriculum renewal, and changed it into a six-year because we thought it was more budget-friendly. It's important to understand that many years' worth of reviews were not conducted, so we're playing some catch-up, and we created a six-year cycle. The six-year cycle has about an annualized cost of $1.3 million, which would be well outside the budget for this year to be a maintenance budget. So in excess of the opportunity that we have in this year, our materials that we cut from textbook selection for this current year. Now, the plan was, is that we would spread this over the remaining, the next six years, and just redistribute or reapportion these costs, delaying in some cases some materials. One of the considerations is you can't have so many teachers who teach, particularly in elementary, multiple classes going through new curriculum adoptions in the same year. You want to spread them out. So it's not, it's not as simple as it should seem. So in order to make this year's maintenance budget work, we delayed grade three through eight reach math purchases, music purchases of all sorts, K through 12, world language purchases, and then we split half of the writing purchase that we had hoped to make this year. So very sizable purchases we spread out over, we essentially kicked down the road. Now, when asking me if that is in fact what you did, what are opportunities that I would see ahead of us, I go from, really along a whole continuum. So you go from very traditional, which would be to reapportion some of those funds back into this budget for textbook purchases this year. Other traditional ways of looking at this money, I would certainly go back to, I think, both Doug and, Dave and Meg, Doug. Dave and Meg pointed out was the need for some administrative support for our principals. You'll see particularly at our large elementary schools, running the regular data teams that we have puts an incredible burden on the principals. It's an incredible amount of work to hold the triannual data reviews that we hold. One principal in particular puts 17 hours into getting ready for one day's worth of meetings. So they certainly, they certainly need support. If we're looking out into the future and we want to be innovative, we will not be successful if we don't have skilled people leading our staff along the way. One recommendation would be, and this is not a one-time cause, would be looking at technology instructional support. We are way, way, way below even our nearest neighbor in terms of instructional technology support for our teachers. And I think if we're really going to make some innovation happen and sustain any sort of pilot program or test case that we have, we would need some people in place to help out. One of the things, and Dave and I, I apologize to Dave in advance because I freewheel on some of my dreaming here, would be to hold off on the reapportionment of some of that funds and move very quickly on the conversation that Dave, and the plans that Dave and I have been working on in terms of one-to-one computing at the middle school level. We think we can make some great gains in terms of getting computers in front of kids' hands, particularly with the Chromebook rollout that we've been talking about now for over a year. David and Kathy Baker and I saw some really great role models on the power of this program, and maybe we don't spend all of it on textbooks, but we expedite the Chromebook program and divvy out accordingly. Conceivably, we could have one-to-one computing if we took this allotment of funds and bought Chromebooks with money we already have planned and budgeted, plus this new money. We could roll out Chromebooks by the end of this, I'm sorry, David, by the end of this year. Obviously, there's a lot of huge considerations to take care of first, but at least we'd have the devices ready to distribute by the end of the school year. I know it's been asked for for many years in this district, we are at the point where we have to have a data warehouse. In my long-range budget plan that I've created and shared it to CNI Subcommittee, there is a way that we can purchase it across five years. It happens to coincide with this amount of money. We are a district that is heavily driven by data. We have an inexhaustible demand for data, maybe insatiable would be the right word, insatiable demand for data. We have one person managing data, we're comparable districts, we probably have three or more. We need the tools for Charles Brandl to be as effective as I think the district wants him to be. So that would be another option. There are lots of ways. We sent a couple teachers to FlipCon over the summer. FlipCon is where essentially students do the assessment in class and do the work outside of class, using tools such as Econ Academy to support their instruction. I like those, those are exciting. Scalability is a concern, and sustainability is a concern. So we would have to make that, plan that out in advance. Same thing with the Chromebooks and the plans that I've sketched out in the back of a napkin, we're talking high-five digits to make sure that we have ample professional development. Our teachers have not had a lot of experience with Chromebooks and iPads, and they're going to need a lot of support, both for our early adopters, but also for our fast followers. So there's a, there's a whole variety of ways of taking advantage of this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Karen?
Thanks for the information. And actually, I think this board, I mean, we've been trying to get to this point for a while, so it's not a new discussion point. So I think I can say on behalf of the full board that we agree the best approach is to discuss it with all stakeholders, because that's how it's successful. I think that what we're saying is the premise or the parameters around the discussion with the stakeholders is how do we reinvent how we do things so we can change the structural budget deficit? Or what's been referred to tonight as a maintenance budget? Or the traditional ways that we provide education? Maybe it's, you know, how students learn, right? And how can we reinvent that so that we can actually change that structure, and we're not just accelerating that same structural budget deficit that's unsustainable? So that's, that's kind of, I think, what we're trying to say is, I think, Charles, to your last idea, even if you looked at skilled employees, it's not teaching them how to use the Chromes or the iPad, it's how to teach them that instructional and curriculum and how, you know, how that material, the learning, the knowledge, the information comes to life is what you're really referring to, and I think that we need to make sure that we're clear with that. And that maybe, you know, is an idea that kind of transforms education, and it buys back maybe some money somewhere else. You know what I mean? So we're trying to change the structural budget, budget deficit, maintenance budget. And so that's, I guess I would go into these discussions with that challenge to people, you know, so they're not thinking traditional lines of how do we just, you know, improve slight- slightly or change one thing, but it doesn't really change the money issue that we have.
Shannon?
I think to change that, it's more long-term innovative. Our district wouldn't look the same, maybe it's a grade-level center, you know, really long-term planning. But in the short term, what Charles is talking about is, and we're working on this in the curriculum committee, is getting those items on a conceptual plan, and I talked about this at the last meeting, a two-page document. It's not that complicated. It's conceptual planning from here to 2019 of all of these items and what the costs are. And hopefully, we can also add what the outcome would be. And then, that can be included in our community presentation and ask the public, do you want to pay for some of these things? This is the cost and that could be a way to possibly, you know, open up, free up some more money is to present innovative ideas and with outcomes and improve student achievement. So, we want to include this in when we're talking to the community because we don't want to just continue the maintenance budget. We need to invest in curriculum and add curriculum, just like you would want to add capital projects to our five-year plan. We need to invest in curriculum and it needs to be a discussion with our community, too.
Emily?
And having this discussion, I mean, I would want to ask Dave, though, you know, the last three years where there have been budget cuts, where was the sting really felt? I mean, where, I'm sure some of those, you know, we're still able to have high student achievement and make improvements, but were there some areas where we really took a step back and that you would say, let's talk about those, too?
Well, I think the first one is what Charles, you know, you did put a curriculum cycle that I think the board wanted a five-year cycle, we had to go to a six-year, and then we delayed it. So, that would be one that I think delays the process of where we're going. I think it'd probably worthwhile that, as Charles said, revisit all that and see what the priorities are again, revisit that with the stakeholders and say, here's what we're thinking. I think the other thing is the whole personnel thing. And I don't want to just point out the elementary principals because I think there's other personnel needs, but I do think there, because of those enrollments and because of teacher evaluation, which has been a huge influx of added requirements that the principals are required to do, that has changed the face of the principal's position. And when you have one principal in a building of 550-plus students and corresponding staff, that principal is really challenged with just the evaluation. Charles also mentioned the data review process, that as a PLC, you want to be leading that discussion. Well, if it takes 17 hours to prepare for one grade level or a series of grade-level discussions on data, plus you have 60-plus evaluations that you have to complete with the complexity that the teacher evaluation process now represents, I think that's a very, it's challenging for the principal. And I think it's challenging for the staff because you want the principal to be free enough to make sure they're not rushing through your teacher evaluation. It's your future. You want to make sure they have some time. And I do worry about just what that process looks like in a building with a principal that has to have 60-plus evaluations in 180 school year, the school year. And so, I think those two things, I think are, and again, we're an increasing enrollment district. Our population continues to increase, our staff continues to increase. So, again, the pressure on the infrastructure has an effect. And the other piece that I think I put in a memo to the board, with the FSLA rules when it comes to overtime and what secretaries and support staff can function as now, has really restricted us because we had dedicated professionals, dedicated support staff who were staying hours and hours after, helping us with a lot of things that were going on in the district. I think we're beginning to feel the effects of having those people on a 40-hour day, you know, trying to restrict our requirement for overtime that we haven't paid before. And that has hit, that would hit the bottom line on a budget issue, so.
I have a follow-up. I know I'm not being very innovative with this line, but weren't there some cuts at the high school, like in the college and the career counseling that, especially with growing enrollment and a district our size, just to begin with, I mean, would you, you didn't name it, but would you say that that's also an area?
Yeah, I think so. I think, overall, the challenge for us is going to be, and again, for the Board of Education, how much funding do you free up? How sustainable is it overtime? Because again, that's a position, the personnel positions are very difficult because you don't want to pull them in, pull them out. You want to make sure that if you reinstate a position like a college career counselor, that you can sustain it over at least a short period of time to make an impact. Otherwise, it's not worth investing in that personnel decision. So, I think that's going to be the very tough part because it's so hard to predict overall funding and Chris, you know, gets apoplexy when we start talking about this. And rightly so, because Chris can't, you know, sit across from me at a table and say, yeah, I can guarantee, Dave, that you're going to have X number of dollars that you are going to have discretionary ability to do over the next two to three years. In fairness to Chris, he can't do that. It's just, it's very difficult. You know, the positive thing right now is some things broke our way. And so, you know, we're in a better position than we thought we were two years ago when we sat here and, you know, we were cutting every year. So, that's the good news. I know the board is anxious. You know, you've been cutting, it gets tiresome. Chris has said it's not why he got on the board, to be the head reduction person across the district. That gets really tiresome. So, you know, I don't want to put a damper on it, but I think it's going to take some time to discuss both at the board level, administrative level, and stakeholder level to say, where do we want to go with future funding that becomes available, both this year and in the future?
I mean, it seems to me that the core of a data-driven professional learning communities district is a data warehouse that every staff member can use to make better decisions for the students in their charge. And to delay curriculum too far means you don't have, you don't enable your teachers to have cutting-edge resources available to them. And I know we're anxious to put some innovation into the curriculum. What do you think our timeframe is to be able to make a good decision here and put some money in this present year's budget along with having a thoughtful discussion about how much we think is prudent to say, all right, if you have two or three more years going forward of X amount of money, what will we do with it? What's our timeframe look like?
I would say, you know, I would like some time to, again, solidify the ideas we have here, make them a little more concrete so they're not as kind of undefined as some of this is. I would like to take it at some opportunities to staff and stakeholders to review what we think some of the options might be, get their input into how they view those options and where it could go, and then at some point, bring that back to the board. So, I would say probably, off the top of my head, I would say aggressively, if we brought it back in November and said, here's the options, these are the ones that we think are higher priorities than others, and maybe roll out to you, you know, short-term one-time versus longer-term sustainability. And then, you have a better feeling by November and maybe Chris will, of where the budget process is going, where the legislation is going, and you can make a more informed decision on the long-term sustainability question.
Chris, go ahead.
Here's a question on timing, though. Are we forcing you to decide on something very quickly or from a budgeting process? I think our Jim asked for about this year and next year, is there a placeholder that we can put into this year's budget before it goes final? That with the caveat that we're not going to spend it, just to spend it, that if, but it gives us the flexibility that if some valuable things come up, we can actually make that investment. And then, secondly, we're going to be doing this five-year, you know, update of PMA projections. And as a novel idea, maybe we can budget beyond one year and actually start looking at some of the longer-term investments we want to make and playing with that model and saying, look, if we were to do this, what would that do to the fund balance? What would that do to our, you know, our surplus or deficit in any given year? To make it a useful management tool for us as a board, as we look through, we speak with our checkbook. If we care about something, we have to fund it. We can say anything we want about it, but if we don't write a check for it, it's not going to happen. And so, I think that as we go through the five-year process, again, at a high level where we're starting to put some markers in, we may not know exactly what they are, but what percentage of our budget do we want to dedicate to this and to that? To that, that discussion, I think, will happen over the next few months as well. But I guess I would encourage us not to try to come up with specific items and rush to get them in a pot so that we can get them, fund. I think we put placeholders in, if we don't find something good for it, then we don't spend it, obviously. And we can have this ongoing discussion because I know, Dave, you're working on kind of that five-year plan, that lighthouse plan that we're talking about, and that's still percolating. And we want to make sure we don't go running off this way now. I mean, these all are part of the kind of that same discussion. We're just, we keep poking at it because we're impatient and we do it in many different ways. But we're kind of, I think, asking the same question over and over again. The budget now is just another angle as to how we're asking, what we're doing over the next five years. So, we can have these discussions on an ongoing basis, but I think I would encourage the committees to have these discussions, too, as we put together the five-year plan going forward. What do you want, you know, what should we put in there for curriculum on that side? The discussion shouldn't just be revenues grew at X and we think expenses are going to grow, these are at CPI, these are probably a little bit higher than CPI, so it looks like this. It's kind of, what does this budget mean? Where are we spending this money? And what are we getting out of it? Right, well, yeah, and the accountability for that as well. So, I think as we go down this process, we're early enough now that we have some time to put some thought into it, but I'm just, I wanted to kind of give a heads up that we're going to be working on these PMA projections, but they're not just a spreadsheet exercise. These are something, these are a tool that we should be using to figure out the decisions, the impact of the decisions we're making at this table and where we want to allocate money.
So, it is logistically possible to put a line item in the budget for this innovation. And if we cannot make a good, well-thought-out, long-term decision, then it's just money that we just don't spend this year.
Well, the board will have the final budget at the next board meeting, so I could adjust, make an increase on the expenditure side in the budget for that item.
Shannon, you had something to?
But what about the, some of these immediate needs, the curriculum adoptions that were pushed back? Or some of the technology that was pushed back at the middle school? I mean, that's part of this?
Yes, it's, so we have, we have X amount of money and we have multiple needs for that money. What I'm afraid is that, what I don't want to happen is that we rush into something and find out later that we should have made another decision, something else was more important. So, I want to allow the staff to do a proper amount of analysis to guide us in what they think would be the most effective expenditure of money to improve education in Elmhurst. But yet, reserve the option to be able to spend it this year and not be locked out of that possibility because of the state of Illinois's, you know, budget process that we must adhere to.
But they've already given us that. It's some capital improvements and curriculum instruction that they gave us one-time items already, so they've already done that analysis. Is that, is that true?
I mean, do you feel you're in a position to prioritize those at this point or would a little bit extra time help you?
Well, I think the spirit that everyone addressed tonight was is bringing in additional people to bounce these ideas off of. You came up with the best thinking of one person. We have, the problem I have is I have more immediate needs than you have dollars for. And I want to be appreciative of what I get at the same, you know, what we're able to provide for our staff at the same time. So, I can put together plans very rapidly, but the playing it out with stakeholders is going to take more time.
I think that is why we always seat you close to Mr. Welton. Margaret?
Yeah, one of the things that I was just noting in our discussion is that I did recognize that there were some short-term items that were perhaps one-time that we could fill in there, but I also heard some important qualifiers in there that weren't one-time items, such as, we talked about technology and curriculum. Well, I heard there was a key need for technology and instructional support. That obviously is not a one-time, one-year item. And I am a little hesitant on having items and not having the resources that can effectively roll out and implement those. So, I think that's a bit of a balance that we need to take a look at and try to understand how we, before we purchase anything, make sure that we can implement it and roll it out effectively.
That's why I think we'd benefit from a little more planning time, but keep the option open to be able to deploy that, those resources this year. Chris?
Yeah, I'm just calling a timeout. I mean, we're not rushing to spend money. I think what we're rushing to do is to get a placeholder in a budget that's going to be finalized because of the state's rules by next month. These decisions don't have to be made now, nor should they. We should have a nice reasoned discussion both at this table and in the trenches on the way up, you know, around what it is, but then the principles behind what we're trying to do. I mean, putting a, you know, a great teacher in every classroom is the one thing that's been demonstrated, had the biggest impact on student achievement. And so, what are the things in innovation that we can do to help empower those teachers from a professional development standpoint, from a resource standpoint? I mean, I think it all comes back to that anyway when we're talking about technology, whether it's one-to-one, whether it's a flipped classroom. I mean, there's some fantastic things I had heard about the flipped classroom my daughter's in, one of them now, and the ability for the teacher to actually say that, look, you know what, this class is big, but I'm actually handling it much better now that it's flipped, it's really efficient for me. And there's some really interesting aspects to that. I'd love to have these discussions. So, let's not try to make a list and then talk about it at the board table as to what we want to fund. I think we need to talk about what we're trying to accomplish, you know, and again, this starts to dovetail with the long-term. And again, it's not just one-time items, this is a one-time placeholder in this year's budget, but there may be a portion of that money that we can divide out and spend over three years to fund something that would be recurring over three years that we know that's there. But this is part of the five-year budget discussion as we're talking about. So, I, my point is, is just, let's not, I don't want anybody to get the impression that we're rushing to try to put this money out. It's not. We're rushing to get a placeholder into a budget that's got to be finalized by November and we want to have an ongoing discussion over the next several months about what best to do with it.
Would, I won't repeat what Chris said because I think he did it well. Would, I think Chris's comments would represent consensus of the board? Okay. Margaret, go ahead.
And can I ask a clarifying question and perhaps help everyone understand? We don't want to rush to spend the money. What is a, what, there's a statement that we need to put a placeholder in there, and can you help explain why that placeholder has to be there and if it's not, why we can't spend that money anyway?
Do you want to address that or do you want me? My understanding is, is under the state budget rules, you pass a budget and you can only spend what you passed in the budget. And that budget's finalized next month for this coming fiscal year. We kind of do it after the year starts, but, so, if we don't put a placeholder in there, we are precluded from spending that money until next year.
Wow, because it just seems, and I don't know that, is that a, it seems like, well, no.
It seems like our fiscal year starts July 1st and we're just approving a budget.
No, I guess I'm struggling with, is that, that is state law and that's a requirement and there aren't any exceptions to that? Is that the, is that the general?
Chris can probably...
I think it's much easier to do it now.
Okay.
We, I think all school districts try to stay within their budget, but it's, certainly there are times when school districts exceed their budget for reasons that you cannot predict something. So, I don't think there's a law that says you cannot exceed your budget. I think it's good practice to try to budget, to plan and budget... I think it's good practice to try to, to budget, to plan and budget accordingly with your spending plan. So if we, if we do plan to or anticipate spending the money, I think we should budget for it, but I think there is room within the laws, you know, for exceeding budget.
Karen, Chris, do we have a policy that, I mean, once you get above a material amount, there's a disclosure question. So there's a process that we would have to go through to just, you know, to create the transparency around what the extra money is and what we want to spend it for and all. So you're going to have to do it at some point if you wanted to later. It's probably a bit more difficult than doing it now.
There is a rule, I think it's 10% of, of the fund expenditure total that you would have to amend your budget if you're not, there is a rule. I don't think this, we're talking about a money...
And before Charles gets excited, it's not in that magnitude.
Right.
So it's just good practice to not have your goal to exceed your budget. I'd rather have a budget and underspend than overspend. And I think, does that answer your question, Margaret?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Excellent. Karen, you had something as well.
Well, I just wanted to make sure that it's clear, that this is an anomaly. We just happen to have some one-time, you know, money come in, like a million from the TIF, that sort of thing, that's helping this situation. You know what I mean? That we've never been in this position before, and we've talked about innovation for probably three years. And so this is the opportunity for us to, once again, start, this, this is really the process that we want to use, right? To reinvent how we do things. Maybe, maybe we can innovate and spend some money here to save a lot bigger chunk later in changing the way that we do business, if you will. And, and so we, this is an opportunity for us to say, we do want to do that. We want to do it so much that we're willing to invest this money in it, but here are the parameters around it. It's not to spend money kind of the same traditional ways.
Emily?
In light of this discussion, I'll touch on it in board communication, but I think the timing of the board presentation of the community in November is going to be perfect, but I'll touch on that.
So, I mean, I think, Shannon, go ahead.
I'm just a little, I want to get some more understanding about what we're asking from the administration. They provided this document for us, a board brief, so they will go back to their stakeholders and review these ideas with their stakeholders. Is that the next plan for your group?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, good.
What I gather is, we want to charge the administration, coming up with a list of the, for every dollar we spend, what has the highest impact on the education of our students. And we want to make sure that they're making a good decision, so they want to run it past their staff, their stakeholders. I think that's a good decision-making process.
Okay.
So, just to be clear, the direction for Chris is to earmark funding for this year in this year's budget for the presentation in September. We need a dollar amount.
The finance committee talked about a half a million dollars. Is that still a number that we're comfortable with? Okay. All right. The, the next thing on our agenda is the superintendent's consent agenda. There are two items on that agenda, the personnel report and the approval of a school nurse agreement with Elmhurst Memorial Hospital. That's items A and B. So can I have a motion, please? Go ahead.
I move that we approve the superintendent's consent agenda, items A and B.
And I need a second, please.
I second the motion.
All right. So superintendent's consent agenda, item A, the personnel report, and item B, the approval of the school nurse agreement with Elmhurst Memorial Hospital. Moved by Mrs. Ebner, seconded by Karen, by Karen Stefen. I'm, I'm struggling between first and last names here and what to use, so until I fully transition to first names, please forgive me. So we are spending money, so Mrs. Walsh, we need a roll call vote, please.
Mrs. Ebner?
Yes.
Mrs. Stefen?
Karen.
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough is absent. Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Yes. So that is six, yes, one absent, no-no, as that motion carries. So distracted by Mr. Bloom and his music box over there.
Was that a replay of the Michigan Notre Dame game you were watching?
Oh, let's hope not.
It was actually a website for the TV show that was on last Friday night on CBS called Teach, which I thought was a fantastic program, and so I was looking for it, and I guess I found it.
Congratulations. Next on our agenda, then, is a list of our upcoming meetings, and it evident we are back in full swing with the start of the school year. Monday, September 16th, is the Curriculum and Instruction Committee, and I will add that all these meetings are in this building. Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, September 17th, the Finance and Operations Committee meeting at 6:30 PM. Wednesday, September 18th, the Joint Board of Education and Foundation Board meeting at 7:00 PM. Monday, September 23rd, the Policy Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Tuesday, September 24th, is our regular Board of Education meeting, which will also include a public budget hearing, and that is our monthly business meeting of the Board of Education. And then finally, Thursday, September 26th, the Performance Management Committee meeting at 7:00 PM. Now, next is board communications. Emily?
Thank you. I haven't updated all the board on this, so I wanted to be sure to bring it here. I've been talking to Karen Szazowski about the annual school board forum, and I think this year it's going to take a little different shape, but I am looking for feedback. In the past, I think it's been a chance for the community to come and ask questions of the administrators and the board, but it has been mentioned that because Dave does such a good job at his superintendent coffees, and Malia does such a good job with her talk 205, that a lot of the questions that used to be asked aren't necessarily asked anymore. Maybe that format has run its course, and there's a format that would be more beneficial to the community and to the school board. Because we have embarked on this idea of the conversation with the community this year, and we have a lot of innovative ideas that we are going to be discussing in the next year or two. So the, I'm sorry, I should preface this with, this is a PTA council-sponsored event, and these ideas kind of, and this communication kind of came from the PTA council. So the date is November 5th, 7 to 9:00 PM, and the format that we're thinking is to do the slideshow presentation that the, what's the name of your committee?
Board Improvement Committee.
Board Improvement Committee has been working so hard on. I was there last night, I should know that. And that would be a good chance to present that, take feedback, questions from the community, the stakeholders about that, and then also break into smaller groups where maybe we address in three different rooms, three different innovative ideas that we think are going to be coming up. I know at our board retreat, the administrators, they brought to us some innovative ideas. We've thrown a lot of them around tonight. I mean, if we really are going to be thinking about this in the next few months, this would be a good chance to hear from the community, hear from all the stakeholders. I think a lot of the challenge is going to be to advertise that, to tell the community, "Come, hear about, you know, come, we're going to be discussing this, tell us what you think." But Karen has assured me that she and Malia have a plan, that they are working on it, and what our job, though, is to come up with what we want to discuss that night. So last night at the Board Improvement Committee, we talked about having each separate committee kind of come up with what they think we should discuss, and I know all of the committees are meeting in the next two weeks, so maybe that'd be a chance for the committees to come up with, whether it's from their specific committee and what they're discussing now, or just in general, some ideas, but sooner rather than later. I think like in the next two weeks, if you guys are on board with this, if you think that there are, we could come up with three topics to discuss, then we need to really lay those out so that we can begin telling the community, this is what we're going to be discussing at the event on November 5th. Yes, November 5th. Any comments or questions on that?
So Emily, what you're asking each committee as they meet is to come up with an idea or two that they could use as their breakout session topic for, for the community forum that's sponsored by the PTA council.
Correct. And I know that there's overlap on the committees, but in general, we're going to try to, we thought we could divide the breakout sessions by committee, which I know, you know, I can't be in two different rooms at the same time, but yes.
Okay. Every, everybody take that charge as they meet with their committees and report back to Emily as to what your topic or two might be? Okay.
As Chris gets to the other presentation.
You're picking on them again.
Are the administrators okay with not being in the hot seat at the November 5th event?
I'm seeing some thumbs up except for Dr...
I should have started off with that question.
Except for Dr. Johns, who sounds like he wants to be there. We, really, we can make that happen.
A clarification on that. I understand that we, the school board, would be responsible for giving the presentations. Just because Charles was disappointed, that wouldn't exclude the administration from participating, would it?
No.
If they chose to. Okay.
Oh, and I forgot to mention that the topic we have, I mean, the, we haven't come up with a name, but things that were thrown out, that the future of District 205, or District 205 in the year 2020, things, some kind of a, I don't know, Emily, you haven't come up with it yet, have you? We were talking about what to call this, just to kind of set the tone, so people understand when they come that we are discussing these innovative ideas. I failed to mention that, because I guess in the past, that is not at all what this has been about, and so I just...
No, it is not.
No, it is not. I know. And I do worry, I don't want people to leave disappointed, so I really want to make it clear what we're going to be discussing that night, because we do have a lot of big decisions coming up, and we want to hear from the community about them. So I just want to make, we really are going to have to work to make it clear what this is about.
I think we can, I think we can come up with a succinct title that gets the message across.
You didn't like the two I just threw out?
Not so much.
No, I do. I do.
All right.
I just have a, you know, typically, it's been people come and voice concerns or, you know, whatever's on their mind, and it's, most of it has been not bored. The board doesn't answer, because it's not really a board question. So we want to frame this as, this is the board's work, talk about what the board's work is, and our vision for the future, some innovative ideas, and try to get people, and then, so then that concerns me a little bit, are people going to come? Because usually they come because they have something that they want to say to somebody. This is going to be a little different. So how do we get the people to come? When you're going to explain, here's the board, and this is what we do.
I can think of all sorts of phrases to throw out there that'll get people to show up, but unfortunately, that'll, that'll get them to show up mad, but, but I, you know, I think, I mean, if we call it, where we're at today, where do we go from here? And we're looking for people's input, I would hope that the concerned citizens of Elmhurst would show up or something like, something like that, or I'm sure Emily can come up with a far-catcher title than that. Margaret?
And remember that we have luscious desserts from La Bragade.
You know, actually, now we're down to it.
And this is my thought, and I guess that's why I, I put in, this is a change from what it has been done in the past, and I'm just wondering how quickly we turn that corner, you know, how quickly we go from, this is a, a, what's my concern as an immediate parent versus globally, this is what we want to think about in the future, and how quickly our community will embrace that. So, you know, I guess that's my, that's my struggle, and, you know, can we make that change all in one year?
Well, as I say, an idea, what if, when we had the breakout sessions, if there are people who show up that were expecting the traditional format, what if one of the rooms had the administrators, and they could go and voice their traditional...
You know what? I mean, if we're going to turn the corner, let's turn the corner.
Or what we could do is, oh, I'm sorry, is follow up with, maybe in January, a meet the board, meet the board where it's just casual dialogue, come, you know, we've done that before, where we're just standing, and people can come and, you know, follow up with an event like that.
I think the PTA council, and going back to all the PTAs, has done a very good job in the past of communicating what the forum is all about. Let's, let's get them the information, let's get them the title, let's get them the expectations for what the format will be, so that they can have several months to articulate that to their membership, and encourage their membership to come and have an input into the future of their children's education.
Yeah. Well, and the timeline, we're, you know, two months out now, so that's why I said in two weeks, we really need to have it, because that gives six weeks to really push, you know, if we're saying, okay, it's going to be one-to-one technology or a data warehouse, we really need to have the things that we're going to talk about so that they can be pushed out there, and people can comment.
Are we ready for this? I mean, this is piecemeal. I mean, you're going to end up shotgun with all kinds of different grade-level centers and three-tiered busing and referendum, and, you know, let's say all the nasty things that we're going to say, you know, I mean, that people think we might say, but, you know, it, I mean, if we're going to talk about the future, number one, are we ready? And number two, we are not the experts. And so the question is, is we run the district in partnership with our administrators. So if we're talking about, I mean, God forbid that we promised something that we think is a great idea, and we come back and find out that there's no way in heck it can get executed. So this is, this is what I'm concerned with. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what this is.
We're not promising anything. We're looking for community input.
But when you talk about the district in 2020 or a title like that, I mean, what are you talking about?
Because we've been preparing the community, we were going to do this anyway. We're going to roll it out to PTAs, so this is just an extension.
Right, but this is a current state document. It's kind of, here's where we are right now.
So you're fine with that.
Right, that's what I thought it was, but as we start to talk about the future of it, I heard a couple of, hey, what we're going to do and where we're going and what our vision is, it's not done yet.
For the breakouts, it would be, you know, for finance or curriculum committee, discuss with the committee, the administrators, one or two items that you want to share with the community, maybe see what they think about it, or, you know, it's, it's not going to be all of these items, like, you know, I don't think grade-level centers would be part of that at all. It's more...
Okay, because I just heard vision. I'm not sure what creative accountants end up in jail. So the financial side of the innovation, I'm not sure, you know, what's on that agenda, but, I mean, I would talk probably more about facilities and needs and capital and that, and so that's not necessarily innovative. But, you know, if the, if the goal is to set current state and current state of understanding and to talk about some of the key needs or areas that we're focused, I get that part. When we start talking about vision and kind of over-the-horizon stuff, I think we, these are done in partnership with the other folks here at the table.
What I took away from the committee meeting last night was, they wanted you to go back to your committees and, and talk about one or two issues that you'd be dealing with in the near future that you thought would be a good discussion for the community, and to get input from the community, and say, here's the issue we're going to be dealing with in finance in the next six to 12 months. We're going to do a little education on it. Where would you like us to go? So I don't think it's the futuring as much as an immediate, these are the issues that we're going to be dealing with, you know, and that follows from the PowerPoint that you've put together. Here's the current state, there's an educational piece, both in terms of how the district operates, what some of the challenges are, what your role is as a board of education, because I'm not sure people understand what that role really is, because your policy, governance, and looking to the future, you're not operations. And I know the, the community confuses that. They think we're all in one, one whole bucket, but it doesn't work. They think we're all in one whole bucket, but it doesn't work that way. And there's plenty of opportunities on the operational side. I mean, I have my community coffees, emails, and you know, if people disagree with an operational decision that we've made, you're hearing about it anyway. So, you know, that's not an issue. But I think it's an opportunity to really say, here's some issues that we're going to be dealing with in the short term. Let me explain it to you and get your take.
Emily?
But I do think part of it should be the innovative stuff, because I think even if it's in its infancy, before I made any decision on a data warehouse or one-to-one pilot program in the middle school, I would want to hear from the community. And no, they're not experts, but I think it's important that we hear what their opinions are, hear from them before we make this decision. So I do think part of it should be, because think about, people sometimes worry that the decisions have already been made by the time they hear about it. Well, this would really be us talking about things long before we've made a decision about them. I mean, this would be a year before we do, or two years before we do any of these innovative things, just kind of throwing it out there and seeing what the community thinks about it. I think it is okay to throw it out there now, even if it's not something we're acting on right away.
But how do you discuss one-to-one if you don't discuss the curriculum around it and what we develop? I think we're still piloting, we're still experimenting, we're still trying to figure out. I mean, what I don't want to get to is, I mean, one of the things that bugs me with technology is buying a bunch of devices and throwing them at people and saying, let's make it work. You just waste a ton of money doing that.
I agree.
And so when we say, we want to get to one-to-one, for me, one-to-one is just a method of accomplishing something else. And so, you know, it's just my pet peeve that when we say, we want one-to-one, it's, why do we want one-to-one? And so you get the community jazzed up with one-to-one, and they all think it means something different. And so, what I'm concerned with is that we risk starting a conversation we're not prepared to have in certain areas, and then the thing gets twisted to the point where you're trying to then come up and backfill with a strategy, and it's already been hijacked or off the rails in a direction or not. I guess that's where I get scared. If we're not prepared, if we don't have something at least marginally baked around how we want to talk about it, that just throwing a concept like one-to-one out is going to end up with a free-for-all kind of discussion, particularly if the experts aren't in the room with us when we do it.
Right. Well, I agree. Charles answered up short.
Okay, let's see, just put him on the line.
But, okay, one-to-one, would it fit in here? But I think some of the other things we've discussed would, I think.
I think in each committee, you can talk about what fits and what doesn't. And I think we can figure it out, committee by committee.
Right, right.
So, we have our charge. Is there any other board communications? Hearing none, then I declare this meeting adjourned.